Six o'clock, our morning. Okay, the reason we're all here tonight at this point is the public hearing. For the town of Newry mining moratorium awards. Right now, what we're all here for, I'm not going to turn it over to Joelle.
Can I do that, will you?
I can do that. Turn it over, please. Now, I'm going to introduce Joelle, and she will give us a quick introduction.
Hi, everyone, I'm Joelle Horrigan, um, Newry's toll enforcement officer, I don't know what town it is. I'm going to read a memo from our town player, um, just because she couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to memorialize what she put in paper for all of us. In October this year, the town of Newry became aware of a deposit of lithium located in its jurisdiction near Plumbe ago mountain, held in private ownership. The Sun Journal on October 25th, 2021, reported that the deposit had been found to be worth 1.5 billion, if it can be excavated, and that this is the richest known hard rock lithium deposit in the world. And this is a quote from Kate Coe, um, from the Lewiston Center. Lithium is an in-demand mineral due to a wide range of issues such as rechargeable batteries, use is not issue, sorry, such as rechargeable batteries for other vehicles, mobile phones, laptops, and other digital devices, storing hydrogen for use as fuel, and doesn't alloy without aluminum and magnesium, making them stronger and lighter among other uses. Lithium is a mineral found either primarily in rock or crystal formation with other minerals, ore, and saltwater deposits. In the case of rock and crystal formations, they must be mined, crushed, and go through chemical processing to extract lithium. The town was told by the owner of the property that the lithium is located in spodumene, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, deposits.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Spodumene is one of the most important minerals lithium can be found in due to it generally having the higher concentration of lithium other than other minerals where lithium may be found. Processing lithium from spodumene crystals is considered a hard rock, and that's in quotes, extraction process which involves extracting ore using conventional mining techniques, performed as concentrated via crushing, then intermediate separation, and sometimes flotation to produce spodumene concentrate. The spodumene concentrate is usually shipped to conversion plants where it is converted into lithium chemical products. Products made of lithium are in increasingly higher demand and in historically mining operations have had significant, sometimes devastating impact on the environment and on off-site properties. Because of these opposing issues, the need for ever-re decrease in supply and historic degradation caused a number of new technologies and techniques are being tried for mining and extracting lithium. In the town of Newry, modern mining is not a significant industry, and the town currently has no regulations in its ordinances that would provide a thorough oversight of a mining operation in town. As a result, mining operations could have significant impacts on existing residential and commercial uses, property values, local and regional environments, and the ability to use natural resources, resources such as drinkable water. Any new developments should be reviewed by the town with the help, safety, welfare, the public, and for nuisances and threats to nearby property uses. It is for this reason, the lack of current regulations in the emerging fight of a highly sought lithium, that the town may want to consider adopting a moratorium on mining for 180 days. This would allow the town time to learn more about mining and develop a set of standards and review criteria for mining activities that would balance existing uses with mining activities in town and in adjacent communities. And I am going to introduce the town attorney, Joe Spiskey.
Thank you very much, Joelle. I'm going to take my mask off, that's okay. So as Joelle said, Joe Spiskey, I'm here up in the town of Newry, and what we're here to talk about tonight is whether to adopt a temporary moratorium that would apply to new mineral extraction properties issued by the town that would be valid for a period of 180 days, would give the town some time to assess improvements or amendments to its existing ordinances to regulate this set of activity for the basis going forward. We took a look at the existing ordinances in the town of Newry and found that there really isn't adequate regulation of this type of, this scale of mining activity in the current ordinance, which really contemplates smaller type of borrow pits, gravel mining, that's that type of excavation. There is a provision for mineral extraction in the shoreland zone, but there's only a small percentage of the town that's actually in the shoreland zone. So, we had prepared a memo for the town a couple of weeks ago, and I thought I would just distribute those to the select enforcement officers here. I have extra copies if anyone wants to take a look. But, this is basically summarizing what Joelle already said about the circumstances in which a moratorium would be appropriate when there's a, the existing regime, the existing ordinance and regulations that are placed are really inadequate to regulate the type of activity. So, I just thought I, I just wanted to mention that briefly. It could be a temporary measure, give the town some time to develop a more robust set of regulations governing activities going forward, not apply to existing operations that are already underway, so I'll leave it at that for now if you guys can answer any questions. So, thanks for your, thanks for your time.
All right, now again, we will open this up to questions. I'm not sure who will be able to answer those questions, but probably Joelle, who will probably feel like we can today.
I think that everybody does, that would be in addition to what the state already requires. I mean, the state of Maine has put in place some pretty high restrictions or requirements for mining, so they will apply them rather than us, right?
I'm going to say that these would be, or they could be more specific than the state, but they may not be.
Yeah, yeah, probably the state requiring an age deposits.
I mean, actually, right now, we don't really have anything. Because of COVID.
I'd like to make a brief presentation on the town's progress. That's okay.
Do you, uh, I don't.
Yeah, Derek Martin with Ranch Consulting, maybe I can see all of us.
Can I bring your comments up here?
This isn't a public hearing, is it?
This isn't a public hearing.
It is.
Sorry about that. Mind if those rocks people come here?
Keep your eyes closed.
Now, if you imagine some problems with people.
Number one.
All right. Like I said, my name is Derek Martin, I'm a licensed geologist. It made my company Ranch Consulting was hired by Mary Lee Freeman and the property owners to help them out with the geological and engineering assessment of their spodumene deposit identified on Plumbe ago mountain. First of all, thank you citizens of Newry and the support you're allowing me to speak. I have over seventeen years of experience working in state of Maine, mostly with environmental cleanup projects, clean water work, hydrogeological projects. I understand Maine geology, and I understand this area very well. First off, I want to talk about, try to get some clarification on the need that this ordinance does not need. Basically, the, the deposit here is a pegmetite granite, and the operations of this granite quarry is basically going to be a granite quarry, very similar to a sandgrout pit. There's going to be no processing of ore that's going to contaminate the environment. It's going to be basically just flash rock and haul rock, and that's it. The deposit itself is, like I said, it's a pegmetite granite. So pegmetite granite, it has like this, large crystals, mostly quartz, bellasars, and other accepted minerals. Most of the bellasars, oh, you have a little basic chemistry here, are alalide and alalime metals. It's calcium, sodium, lithium. Lithium is considered an alalime metal, although it's not metallic, it's not metallic in nature. It's an alalime metal, it is highly conductive to electricity. Same with the other alalime metals and alalime metals. This deposit is formed as a cooled magma. So it's basically lava before it exits the earth's surface, buried deep underground hundreds of feet, maybe thousands, four hundred million years ago. And it is, it's not what's considered a sulfidic ore, which is like the type of ore that has typical acid mining, or not, acid mining properties. This is not that. Apples or oranges comparison. The sulfidic ore deposits are the ones that contain precious metals, semi-precious metals, gold, silver, stuff like that, that's been identified in Northern Maine. The Cowl Hamline out of Brooks is an example, not here. This is strictly a pegmetite granite. It's all this, very inert, quartz, this is pretty much mineral glass, inert. Most of this stuff naturally weathers to perform, to form some of Maine's, you know, cleist aquifers, sandy beaches. It, like I said, it does not lead to acid mining. You know, Maine has a proud history of granite quarries. Essentially, once again, this is going to be a granite quarry. Some of them have provided granite for famous buildings, monuments throughout the world. And this would provide a mineral that's essential for giving the world off fossil fuels. This is a geologic map created by the United States Geological Survey. The deposit is right in here, it's Plumbe ago mountain. This is the Ellis River Valley. You have White Cat Mountain over here, Rockford's over here, Nury's over here. As you can see, this is all Devonian Age granite. And I'm happy to show this map. So this is a Google Earth image, I can get that straight, of the location of the existing quarries on Plumbe ago mountain. The site property is located right here. As you can see, there's been a long history of granite quarrying for gems, turtle winged barrels such on Clave Bay, this would be no different than that. And actually, as you can see, it's so remote that, you know, there would be no impacts to residential properties, drilled private wells, public water supply systems. All of that is actually included by the performance standards, by the Maine DEP. So it's part of a, it's part of the application process. You have to go through and you have to determine that there's going to be no adverse impacts, and if there could be, you would identify that and mitigate it, or not do it. So you've got stuff like sinipia wildlife habitat and protected areas, groundwater protection, provisions for solid waste management, natural buffer strips, protected natural resource buffers, roads, property boundaries, erosion, sediment, sedimentation control, stormwater, blasting, I could go on and on. This is already governed by the Maine DEP with their oversight of any license of a granite quarry or gravel pit throughout the state. I took an oath as a licensed geologist that I would not involve myself with any project that I felt was not about ore. Same with the licensed geologists in my office and the licensed engineers that would be working on this project, if that, if that, if that does happen. I know that the freedoms of for it to working with the town, and we do not feel that the, the moratorium is necessary because it could also impact future gravel pits, other quarries, and another operation throughout the town. That's all I have to say, thank you very much.
You want to say something about this, sorry?
Sure.
Um, there's a couple of questions. What's, what's the potential area that's going to be mined?
Oh, great.
Ten acres square.
Gary, do you want me to answer that for you?
That's fun, yeah.
So, the permanent application for the DEP, the first step would be either a five to ten acre sized quarry. So, in this area here, just for reference, this is likely about, I would say, ten acres here. So a disturbance in the landscape, this is like the peak, this is Plumbe ago mountain, there's peaks, but it's situated in kind of this valley between these two peaks. The only way you would ever see this quarry, I believe, is actually from the saddle. I don't know if there's any mountains up here that would actually have a view to it. But yeah, so the disturbance would be very similar to that. And the performance standards by the state require that after the, the actual quarrying operation is done, that the land is reclaimed, so that slopes are stabilized and it's safer to, or safer any trespasser. Basically, the, the property is so remote, you have to get there by private access roads which are gated. So there's really no risk right now to the public unless they were to trespass. But like I said, the state holds those assurances as part of the permitting process that it will be reclaimed to their performance standards. Yes, I'm pleased, please, planning board. So just out of curiosity, where would be the entrance exit or the travel ways of this mine? Would it be over in the Ellis River Route 5 section, or is it down through Howard Pond? You know, where, where, where would the traffic be?
It's through the Sway, Swayney Quarry, over and, and over.
So that's right off the, it's right off the area, okay, this is Route 5, Ellis River Road, you're like right up here.
So that's, so the track will be over 5?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Finally. So, it's Swayney Avenue, and I'm just, you know, kicking off something. So what you're saying is this mining project is going to have no impact on the town of Newry, geologically speaking, and as far as it seems, with the state regulations already in place, that would amply the captain permitting adverse effect of any mining operations.
That's correct.
That's what you said.
That's correct. To think of this as any other granite quarry in the state of Maine, hundreds of them, for hundreds of years, it's, it's no different.
And you are a geologist and an expert on such things?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have reference that the lithium material is hundreds of thousands of people on the surface?
That's when it was formed, yes, it was formed at the magma chamber. That's when, that's when the mineral crystallized out of its magma form, think of it kind of like lava underground.
How far did the hell go now to create that?
Oh, no, so what happened was, so, you know, four hundred million, four hundred million years ago, that formed underground, you know, four hundred billion, four hundred billion years of erosion, and mountain building has basically brought everything up to the ground surface.
Can I request what your name is, please? Carol, Carol? Last name? R A Z, oh, C. Gotcha, we've met, okay, thank you.
So we haven't, that we haven't seen lithium below seventy-five feet from the surface.
And will that be blasted there, or is that, then we have, how will it be?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it would be a standard core pouring operation where the holes are drilled and blasted. And what we plan to do is, we plan to take the rock to a mill in Andover and then experiment with machine learning and cameras to separate the spodumene out from the stuff that you don't want. The reason we can do this is because the spodumene is so coarse. Nor, normally in other mines in the world that are outside of there, the, the, thumbnail, these things are like trees. So, so, so we can use cameras and computers to say, because it has its own shape, you know, it looks like little, little blocks of wood when it's left blasted, we can, that we believe we can easily tell the difference between spodumene good and quartz not so good. You know, you can just tell by looking at this. So that we have the Swayney Mill Building over there almost filled up with stuff.
So if there's less than a ten acre area that would be deserved, is there any timeline on how long it would take to go from what is about to ten acre?
I don't know. No, it would be dictated probably by the comments.
Yeah, it would be three years or so, I can't, I, I can't say that would be over.
So what happens when you've done the whole processing, you've taken the good stuff out, what do you call it, bad stuff? Where does that go? What happens to the waste?
Okay, that waste either goes back into the hole to reclaim it, or go into your driveway.
Then it's not going to have a location process, what does that entail?
I don't know, is that part of the, that would be a, like.
Normally in a spodumene mine, what they use is they use it a dense media, and, and it's kind of like little balls, little metallic balls that weigh slightly, uh, slightly more than the jump rock. So that, basically that the jump rock is floated out. So it isn't really, you know, it isn't really anything other than ferrous silicon beads that you adjust the, the density to or try to take a garbage rock out.
Totally, yes, sir, will it fall while taking it out?
Why?
Senator Baker, planning board, Mr. Freeman, what impact would a 100-day moratorium have on your operation?
Well, you know, we have a really high bar to get over with, and that's the, you know, and, and we have the main mining laws. So, 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 I mean, you know, there's more, more chlorine passes. I really can't answer that, but, but, but we're going to keep plugging away on our engineering work and so, so, so on. And if my wife and I want to do this small scale on our own, and we probably had a dozen offers, you know, to buy the whole thing, and, and if we don't want to go there, you know, we just want to do the pokey puppy step by step. And I can tell you that I highly doubt there's 1.5 billion dollars worth of spodumene out there.
So, so what I hear you saying is that you're still in the processing development stage, and it doesn't sound like a 180-day moratorium will affect that much. Is that correct?
Eric, maybe you can speak to that.
No, I don't think so. Basically, yeah, basically the state application process is another, I believe, three to six month process for them to review everything and go back to those few questions and mitigation measures and so on.
So what I hear is that our 180-day moratorium would not impede anything?
Likely not.
If I understand that the state won't approve it or take action on it, let the town, the town prove it first.
We don't have a profit.
So the town, the town goes to put this guy's product on hold, and he's basically a limbo for about eight hundred days, and then he has to go to the state. So if, if this gentleman just wanted to find a grant by Steve, okay? If he just wanted to find a grant, it wasn't on the front page of the paper, he wouldn't have a problem at all. Well, because he actually has something that's tremendously more valuable than granted, everybody's up not because somebody put a billion dollars in the newspaper. So, I mean, to me, I'm just wasting my dignity because nobody's told me to shut up yet. But, you know, if he wanted to go through Steve's property and, and mine grant, there would be, there would be no grant, go ahead.
I think the process of mining lithium and refining it together is a little bit of a dilemma.
The mining is.
Well, we have to, the process afterwards.
Well, the process didn't take place.
Okay, yeah, okay. Come here, darling, please.
Can I speak, please?
Gary, can you help us speak?
Thank you. I personally went to the site on Friday with Steve, with Gary.
Yeah, can you move that out, out of the vicinity?
Oh, yes, sir.
Kind of like being in the corner. It's funny. I went to the site, okay, I wanted to know, I'll be honest, I don't know very much about mining. I know even less about rocks. I learned a lot. I learned that reading the newspaper article, all those links worked in mine in South America, or most of the ones that I clicked on were all in South America, they weren't even in this country. The mining process that I saw on Gary's property is very similar to the process that I saw on Steve's land. It's a similar thing. The process of taking, I have my little rock right here that I picked up that day, of turning this into lithium, isn't going to happen here. It's not going to happen in this state, it's not even going to happen in New England, from what I understand. There's, if I remember correctly from Friday, there's a plant being built in Nevada, and there's one that's idle in one of the Carolinas, if I'm correct, is what Gary told me. So, what I was explained is these rocks are going to be handpicked off the conveyor belt for now, and then they're going to look into doing the camera selection to sort things, very similar to other, whatever companies when they sort stuff out. And then it will all be shipped from here to the processing plant. So there's nothing going to be drilled into the ground, pumped into the ground, and we're not going to see pictures that the internet showed. That's not even the process that's going to take place here. So, that's my two cents.
And then one major application of this spodumene. And then one major app, application of this spodumene, because the iron in it is so low that it can go into glassmaking. And when they use it for glassmaking, they just shovel it right in, just like this, just right into the oven. And they make cooktop stoves. They make cor, cor, corningware. And that would be a big, big application for it because the iron is so low that the iron gets too high, the glass turns green.
What are you, I think it goes to say that you just contradicted what you said about shipping oil. You said there was going to be a facility in Handover? That floated things to the dock?
No.
Well, yeah, yeah, that we are going to use.
That mechanical, or is that chemical?
Mechanical, totally mechanical.
No chemicals at all?
None, none whatsoever.
So we're going to change the order of the town initiative for the town of Newry. I want to be really clear, I'm a little concerned about what was said, that if the town doesn't authorize this, that the state will stop. The whole reason we're bringing this moratorium ordinance to the voters is because there is not a process in place currently to authorize this type of mining in the town of Newry. Gravel pit, absolutely. Borrow pit, absolutely. This type of mining, no. We do not have a process in place, and that's what we're asking the voters to consider today, is take a moratorium, let's set up a process so that we can authorize this type of mining in the future. We're not saying we don't want this type of mining. We're just saying we need to take the time, your diligence, look at what this looks like, and we put the proper regulations in place so that we can authorize this in the future. Am I correct in this?
Absolutely right.
So even if we don't have this process in place, anybody who wants to do this has to follow the state regulations, though.
Right, but I was just told that if we say no tonight, that the state.
Right, no, no, I just want to, I just want to make sure that I, yeah, I just want to make sure that I understand whether we have one or not, they still have to follow all the state, whatever the procedure is.
But it really does make a lot of sense for the town to know that this type of mining is going on in town. If this hadn't hit the paper, we wouldn't know until the DEP went through its total regulations. We wouldn't have a clue.
There is one town meeting that's required as part of the application process. There is a public informational meeting.
That's what I'm saying. So if we had a town meeting, prob, so, it doesn't mean it has to control us, but it really does make more sense if we had a part of it everywhere. Everybody has to follow the same process. Everybody knows what they have to do.
My name is Jody Giddings. And I, I believe that we've already heard that the one hundred eighty days will have no impact on the process. So I don't understand why we aren't willing to listen to Amy and take the time to see what we need to do so that the proper channels are established.
There's a question in the back.
Hi, my name is Brian Pearson. Uh, she was saying this type of mining, that it doesn't, there's not this type of mining occurring. Well, it is occurring. It occurs at Steve Swayze's quarry. The exact same kind of rock is being mined at his quarry that we are mining at Halega North. So this type of mining is occurring, and it's occurring without issues already in Handover. So us mining the same type of penitite that Steve Swayze's mining is going to have the same results as far as the environmental impact. So it already is occurring. This type of mining that we do, the granite blasting, scooping it up with an excavator, putting it in a truck, bringing it down, crushing it to a smaller size right there that can be used directly from that size to a product, is the exact same thing that Steve does. His product is used in streets and roadways and other projects. But it is the exact same thing.
Is that in Handover?
And that's, that's in Handover, but it's the same, it's the deposit that's in Newry. But it is occurring. This type of mining is occurring here.
State regulated, too.
And it's state, fully state regulated. Thank you.
It's also regulated by MSHA, which is federal government.
If some are, he's out, what was that stand for?
Mine Safety Administration.
He, one person.
Mine Safety Health Administration.
Thank you.
And you haven't dealt with anybody until you're dealt with them.
That's a fact.
I was thinking, just, just.
That's, that's a fact. Go ahead. Just one more thing. I'd like to speak to this gentleman here.
Sure.
Once again, you're saying as a professional, as an expert, that this mine will have no environmental impact on the town of Newry and within the DEP regulations and the state reg, and, and town regulations, that we aren't looking at any bad effects with a project like this.
That's correct, yes. As long as the performance standards are adhered to, DEP's performance standards to protect the environment, protect the health and safety of the public, are adhered to, there will not be any adverse impacts.
And you're saying that as a person that is qualified, I think I say more.
I took it, I took it, I took it, I took it out.
All right.
Yep.
Amy?
Simon, Amy, and Alia. I guess I just want to know, in this one hundred and eighty days, what are we going to accomplish in this one hundred and eighty days? How much does this have cost the town? Is this something that we, an expense that we're going to have to inherit?
The planning board will take on the, um, the whole of having some public hearings, um, working with a planner, and developing the ordinance, so.
Just because I, me, me have some tough mining laws, and MSHA certainly does, well, my husband works in that.
I guess I have one question, and so if you go through the process, you do nothing, and then we bring this to town meeting, and we have a whole set of people, because how many people are here from the town right now? And say we have doubled this, and they vote it down. What happens then? If we just go through the DEP regulations, we just go through the process, and we bring this back when it gets finalized, what happens to the whole process if we have to bring this back to a town meeting and it says, "We don't want this mining in our town"?
I believe the, the public informational meeting is not a vote of yes or no. It's more of a public input.
Because you said it was a town meeting. A town meeting, to me, is we get to vote on whether or not we want this in our town or not.
Now, as stated in the ordinance right now, any kids' mortgages of five acres would be governed by the DEP.
And the DEP requires a public hearing? Or do they just require a public informational meeting?
It's a public informational meeting.
Oh, okay. That's not the same. Yeah. I mean, I just, the, the, the intention would be that you would have a say at that time. And something may come up between now and then that would sway you a different way, or there would be thirty other people here that would feel differently. Um, so I'm just wanting to be really clear, because when I heard that, I was like, oh, well, maybe we don't need to do this. Because if it has to be voted on by the voters before it can go through, then that's fine. That takes care of this whole process. But that's not what you're saying. You're saying that there's an informational debate, but you don't get to vote down the cross.
Reda?
So we have this, uh, if we decide to go with this one for moratorium, um, how's this going to affect if Jake wants to do a gravel pit ten acres, or Doug Jones, or any of the spies in the town of Newry? Going to affect any of them?
Does not affect existing gravel pit operators.
No, it's a new one. They want to do a new one. Thing's got plenty of land, but maybe you could dig out that one across the street or right by your house, so, you know. This would affect them, correct?
Well, ninety days is under winter time, so.
Well, I know, but it doesn't matter.
Ninety's not a hundred and eighty.
Yeah. Okay, so I'd like to, I'd like to hear your answer to that, or from Joe.
So it would be a temporary suspension on new mineral extraction applications. Does not affect existing operations.
Right.
But it would be temporarily suspended, new applications.
So, not to be devil's advocate here, though, we just heard that it takes three to six months to go through the DEP process. So if anybody in this, uh, in this room wanted to start that right now, you wouldn't likely be able to start digging in the ground until July.
But what if somebody already started it? We wouldn't know.
This is, this is the reason why we, we want, absolutely.
Right, if, if somebody just wanted to start a gravel pit, I mean, I, whatever they want to do on their land, I.
Well, no, we might do that, and I would get a call, and I would have to go talk to them and start the process.
A gravel pit's different than, than mine.
I, I understand that, but you just said that we don't hear about it until.
I think we, we have a lot of public notice, doesn't it, huh? I mean, when you file these, you put them out in public, in the newspaper, with some kind of like a public notice, right?
That's correct, that's correct.
That DEP, DEP requires.
Anybody else got any questions? If not, we will conclude the public hearing. And we will go on into the town meeting. Washington.
Well, at six forty-four, breaking. And the name of the state of Maine, you're a chair by number five, it's one in town, the town of Newry, and said county and state qualified by law to vote on town affairs, means the Bay River Bridge in said town on Tuesday, the thirtieth day of November, directly after the public hearing that starts at six o'clock in the evening. Act on the following articles, Article One and through Two, as set up below. Article One, to choose a moderator by secret ballot, in the odd seven weeks. Hoping that somebody will nominate.
We have a third act, though.
Say who?
We've got the title, the third act, so the moderator can vote.
For them, for them. What about?
I'm going to give you your lead.
I need three. Do you want to come?
I'm going to borrow your pin. I have one in the car, I forgot that.
First one. That's pretty good, Mark.
I'm for.
It, it, it's just, it's, it's actually very cool. Um, I can introduce you to the guy, because I have a lot of. See it, you walk around, it looks like, it's very cool.
What do you need? Just want to run over you, how sweeping things before we get started, so we can, and the state's set for the discussion. I would like your approval to use the main moderator's manual as a guide for the meeting. Being more direction will approve, will proceed in that light. If they use the main moderator's manual, if you need it, that's, thank you. I will not accept a negative motion. Our pass over the article motion that we're addressing tonight. Um, it would be helpful when you address the meeting. You would say your name, please, so everybody knows, especially me. Everyone will have a chance to speak, but I will not recognize repeat speakers until the first time the guest speakers have their opportunity. And I won't take a move to question, motion right at the beginning of the discussion. And I'd like to recognize any non-presidents before we get underway. How many non-presidents do we have? Basically around just per the, okay? If we want to speak at some point, we have to have a motion to allow you to speak. It doesn't mean you can't. We should, we should. And with that, I will read the article. Article Two shall, in ordinance entitled Town of Newry Mining Moratorium Ordinance, be enacted. It has a motion on Article Two.
Do you have a motion and a pass?
Thank you, sir. We've intended to be approved. Discussion. Any discussion of questions? You've had, you've had all of our questions answered, are there questions? Very good. If there's no further discussion, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor of Article Two to refer it and not discuss, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, now we'll get a vote, we've got a camera. Let's get back to polling. If everybody put it down, we'll start from the beginning. All those in favor of Article Two?
Right, you got that one?
Nine. Nine, nine, nine in favor. Those who vote Article Two are presented.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Article Two has been defeated by a vote of nine thirteen. And that, and that concludes our meeting. We'll have a long one for you.
I'll sign it up.
Take first.